Start taking you guys seriously, okay? And there is no second chance, honestly. Usually you have one shot. You got it, you got it. You don't get it, you'll miss it. Okay? Take a note also, Daniel, Michael, Mildred, take a note. Point number one for Tuesday. Please think about what to put in the top of the website. What do you want to put on the top of the website? That's one things. Second element, please do go to the Apache. It is A P A M C G O U G. I think you already have done it, okay? Please go to this one and learn everything they have there. It's so slow, you see how slow it is, the website? Extremely slow. Anyway, go over it and learn it, okay? Learn it. For example, I'll give you an example. This is really, it's beautiful if I want to go on vacation. Is that right, Daniel? But I don't know how much the citizens in the city needs to look at the picture like that. One things you can do, okay? Download this picture, you can do right click and save image as. And then you can upload it to our website, okay? Let me do it. I have two computers that I play with, so. Look at another one here. Be organized, okay? Always save the images, any image, save it as a JPEG. It takes the least space on the computer, okay? And hopefully those one are in good quality, okay? Now I'm gonna move to this one. I will do save image. That's will be, let's see this one. Let's save it. Oh, this is a big image. I would like to upload it, by the way. Too big. It will not let you upload it. You know, that's why the website is so slow. You know?
Excuse me, Dr. Amos.
Yeah.
We are not seeing.
Ah, it's not shared?
Yes.
Yeah.
One second, sorry about that. Thank you for letting me know. Tell me if you see now.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for letting me know. See, this is. Honestly, those images are useless, in my opinion, okay? But we're not gonna tell them that. It's their decision, you got it? See, those are reasonable size. Less than a megabyte is reasonable. More than one megabyte, it's too big, okay?
Yes.
Let me see, I think this one we did already. I don't know how many he has here. What happened? Yeah, this one, you see, it's a very high resolution. So it takes a lot of space. This one, this one. And let's see. Let's say this is from last year. More than a year, almost two years now. Meaning they are not really, they are not really updating. Okay. I will save it, let's see how many of them. Yes. Okay. So just learn what they have there. I already have gone through all of them, by the way. Download those images and apply. I think this one, whatever, they put it on top of the image itself. It's part of the image itself, okay? We can talk about it, it's not the crucial, that's not the important things. In a minute, we'll see what important. But let's see, they have about us, our profile. Have a lot of fun. By the way, if you notice, the right side is always there. Who needs that? If you want to talk about your profile, nobody needs to see the date of the day today. Or every time I click on something, it's unnecessary. I will talk about it in a minute, okay? Secondly, okay, administrator. Empty, okay? Needs to be filled. We can recommend, I will take the lead of the discussion. Departments. Department, it's really services, okay? We can put all of those as services. If you look at the website I did. If you go to Kamala, just for demonstration purposes. I took Kamala and I took from their website. If you go to their services, you get the whole list right here. And then when I click on one of them, and that's what we have as an advantage. I got a page, it looks like empty. But in a minute, when I go to the same one and do admin. I log in as an admin. And now I go back. Now I logged in. In fact, you can log in with Academy City as well, it will work too. Now that I go to the edit. And that's what's special about our webpage. When I go now to Kamala and I go to services, I click on health. I can edit it. I can go here, put a style. But please pay attention, in style, you can choose type of container or a content. I don't really know what teaser does. If you can figure it out, let me know. Container will take smaller space on the page. Content will take the whole page. So let's say content for a second. And I will do save. Now I can put under it whatever I want. I give you a good, I give two examples. Let's look for a regular text. I can tap whatever I want. I intentionally want you to start getting comfortable. Go play with it, you can go and play with Apache. And then eventually, until you figure it out. That's how I save it, okay? Save. What's the beautiful part? When I'm here, it's, it's already online. You got it?
Yes.
It is really online on Amazon. Everybody got it?
Yeah.
That's the beauty. I will switch to West Management, there is nothing, okay? I can go now and edit West Management. I just make a, in fact, you know what we will do? Be really good idea. Let's go to Kamala. Website, they have one of the best. Think they have the best one. I show you why I took it. You go to services, you see it's the same thing. I have health. I click on health. Oh, you see, they have, they have some stuff on the right side. This one by itself, by the way, it's needless because it's a building itself. That's all direct, uh, director. Director it. This one, it's the same list, they have in directors, you see that? Stupid. This is not necessary. But I would like to mimic, to do the same things as they did here. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Let's, let's see how I can do it so easily on our website. By the way, in Apache, they don't really have it. They don't have anything like that. I go into ours, I go back to the services, I will go to the health. I just did garbage here. But I want to change it. And now, by the way, if you go here, you notice, you can click here and you have so many options. Play with it, learn about it. What budget does, read also on the internet, okay? One, very important is row. I'm gonna add a row with two columns. I'm doing save. I'm gonna have two rows. In fact, I'm moving it up. I want to put it as the first things. The text is, the columns are empty. I have really a row. You see, I have a row. But I have two columns, but they are empty. So what I would like to do, stage number one, I'm gonna take this text, move it inside the first column. It doesn't looks like anything changed, but I already did. In a second, you will see. The text is under the first column. I'm gonna add another text to the second column. Let's write Brenda. Fair enough? In a minute, we'll do more sophisticated and stuff. That's good. You can make a big title, small title, you play with it. Here we go. What's the nice things? We have two columns, you see that? Let's do that one again. And put a big text. A text from the news, news. Second news, let's see. CNN, breaking news. Let's copy something. Yeah, let's see. Here we go. Fair enough? We're gonna copy the whole things here. Right click, copy, just to demonstrate. First of all, to understand what, instead Brenda, sorry. Okay, Brenda? Don't be mad at me. Okay, I saved. You say I got the whole text on the right side. You got it? That's pretty cool.
Yes.
Okay? I can play with it, in fact, I can double click here. I can play with it, I want it to look differently. You have all the editing, make it like this, this usually look better. Save. Let's say I want the, I wanna, you can even, that's why I want you to study CSS a little bit, okay? Let me go to another example I have done. We'll get back to that, okay? Remember, this is the health. Let's write it here, so we know this is the health. I will just, let me, where is the Kamala? Let me copy this part. Yeah, and then copy the stuff from Kamala website on the left side, okay? Let's just save. See, I have the left side, I copied it, doesn't look that good, okay? Okay, I want to make it so nicer. By the way, I play with it a little bit, to give you some examples. I think I put it here, HR, maybe this one? I played with one of them, here we go. Here, I even give you example, how you can make stuff like this, okay? Double click here. By the way, you can play a lot, but do study CSS a little bit. If you go to the source, it show you the HTML of this part. I, by, by, by the way, I use margin to make it look nice around the box. I copy that for myself, cancel. You know, I'm going back now to the health. The beauty here, you can switch to edit and it's immediately will be online. I'm going here, I go to the source. There is the, ah, there is no div. Let me add div around it. I will add div. And I will put the styling. Style, margin, it keeps a space from the left. This is start from the top, the left. I think so, we'll see in a minutes, I never remember, by the way. It's hard to remember, but in a minutes, I will figure out. Close the div and go back. Okay? If you, here we go. It kept some space from the left, from the top, from the right. Doesn't seems like, but let's try. You see, he moved it from the left, he wanted it to look nicer. Is that right? Looks a little better already, am I right?
Yes.
It's already, to the right, I don't think he put any space on the right. So let's do double click, find out which one changed the right side. Which one changed the right side? It seems to me, this is the top, that's the right. Let's put here 50. So we can see which one, if it changes the right. Yeah, I did, you see? It kept a little more space in the middle, did you notice? Fair enough? Go over it, still doesn't look right. I can go here and, you know, those paragraphs, here it's a paragraph. And double click, click on it, click on it. Click on it, and not just, you didn't make any mistakes. So what? Delete it and start all over, big deal. Now it looks a little better, isn't it?
Yeah.
What do you think, Brenda? And you see how quick it is? If I publish it, I click view publish, it's online. That's amazing, that's the beauty. When the guy from Apache will send you the material, it will say, when do you think it will be ready? You're not going to be afraid. You're gonna say a couple days. But what you do, you say a couple days, you call him the following day. So I give it to him even faster. He won't believe in a couple days you can do it. The shoes of the metal, you can do it in a couple hours. You know what you know, am I right? This is the level you want to get. See, this is already look nicer, okay? Let's look again, the original website. This is the original website, okay? This is the left. You can play with a lot of things as you want. But see, this is a little longer than the right side. So I can play even with that. I want to make this column wider than this one. And I want to put something else on the right. I can do that too, okay? How do we do that? Very simple, extremely simple. We go to the style, we have two rows. This is the first row, this is the second row. By the way, now notice, I'm not going to the text. I'm going to the column. I can edit it. And this is very, please study it, study it and be better than me. I can be so good in everything, okay? I want you to be better than me, what you can do with it. By the way, this is also designed for cellular phone or regular. And honestly, I don't remember everything. I just know if you change this one, if I want to make that, it's the total of the whole page is 12. So if I would make here eight and save it, it will give the left one, eh, it will give, but it will push the right one. So I'm making, I'm going to the right one and making it's like three. Let's make it four, seven plus four, it's 11. So I keep one extra, so it will be a little bit better. So if I save it now, you see the right one is smaller. The left one is longer, because I changed the form. Did you see that? I change, I can even go more than that. I can go here and click here, go here, and go here. Not this one. I want to go to the second one and make that one even three. By the way, you can play with it. I think some of them are for computer, some of them for cellular. So you need to read about it. I think this one is if you have, this is for computer, this is for cellular phone. But read about it, honestly, I don't remember. Fair enough? By the way, you can make margin left. If you want to put margin on the left, it has so much in there. Much more than I can even remember. Let's put a margin to the right, how much do we want? Let's put margin to the right, I don't know. Never played with it, honestly, okay? Let's prove, yes. I just know that it's very, see, this one becomes to be really smaller. Is that right? Because I put a margin and I shrink that. Play with it a little bit, get the idea and eventually you can make all the pages the same. I don't think that was a good idea. So I'm gonna go back. Play with it until you get, you feel comfortable. Yeah, I change it to one. Yeah, one, it's too small, put three. Put this one. Okay. This is start looking like the right size, is that right? Okay? This is like, but that's not the text that we want. So I'm gonna go edit and take it away, the whole things. In fact, more than that, I'm gonna, I can even do that. Don't be afraid, don't be afraid, because when you know it takes a second to do it. I'm gonna delete the whole text on the right side. Don't be afraid. The whole text is gone on the right side. The stuff on the left have stayed the same, you see that? Some things on, on the, let's go, if you look, let me go and show you another things that you can add. You can add, there is something called card. Card is really a nice one. Card. And you do, okay? This is a good one for you to know. And play with it, be really excellent. Try to change the form, change stuff. Now when I click on it, it gives me, what can I put? I can put a link button. I really tried to play with a list group, I wasn't successful much. But you play with it, okay? Put under it some other stuff. The one that I played with the most is the card editor. And you can put a header. Let's say, I put a header. And I go into the header, I will add to the card header a text. And I will call it Brenda. Save. Okay, please watch it. We have a header of a card. Everybody see that? You see this, guys? Hello? Hey, guys.
It's raining very heavily and that's.
Yeah, I got no message, I assume then. Yeah. Wow. Too bad. You want guys to talk tomorrow, maybe, or should we wait? Are you using your telephone now, or you're using your, your hand power bank?
If not now, no, it's not, it's not that stable.
Let's try and see what happened. If it, it's breaking, we will just be patient, okay? Okay. I just wanted to show you, I just this, this one. Okay? Really, something similar to what they have. If you look at their website of Kamala, they have something like that. You can make something similar, by the way, even by hand. But Django has special component, you can take advantage of it. But you can do something like that very easily, even by hand. And I will show it both ways. Django has inside something called a, it's called a card. Let me delete it and start all over, okay? I'm gonna delete the card. And see what you like. You have to get to a point, you can do almost anything on Django. Why? Because A, even if you make a text, inside the text, you can put whatever you want. But there are already some component that are made. If I go here and click on card or look it up, by the way, sometimes it's hidden here. There's a lot of the picture, media, list group. Read about it, okay? Read about it, tapes. You can read and learn how you use them. Some of them I created, by the way. Financial statement, analysis ratio. One day, I will teach you finance and accounting, we'll get there. You have Google Map. You have a lot of stuff that you can read about and how to utilize, okay? For now, I just want to focus on card. Card, it's very useful. I click on card and please be better than me. You should be better than me. I put the card, it's right here, it's empty. I can add to it a title. And I choose a card editor and I choose a header. And I do save. So that's adding a header. And now I want to add to it a content. So I can put a text. And the text, I can put whatever I want. Can go here and just copy this title. I could go over here. And just put it here. If I want, can change the color. Maybe the color of it to be a, let me put it white. But before, maybe changing this one, I can go right here, change the whole things. So the P will be style, background, color. No, right, right. That's what give me a background, right? Let's go back, it should be ready now. Let's see if it works in a minute. Or maybe I misspelled it, let me try that, double check. I hope I did it. I think I did, okay. Yeah, that should be it, should work now. I go back, let's see, we'll try it in a second. And, and you save, let's see what we got. Nope, I didn't really got it. So maybe if I go here, this is the text, let's go to the top here. Let's see if I can change the color here.
Okay.
Hey, guys. You're doing good?
We're doing good though, no, we are now using just one phone, this one.
Yeah, I will, I will do it again, okay? Don't worry about it.
All right.
I'll do it again, don't worry about it. Okay, let me start this one one more time. Okay, I'm going to show you how you can make a card. So I will delete it. So I will delete it and then redo it. Under the style, I put a row. I have two columns. One here and one for the right ones. So I go to the right one. And I had made a card, but I'm gonna delete it. If you click here, you can delete. And don't be afraid, even if you made a mistake. One day you get to a good point, that you can really do it so quickly, so you're not afraid to make a mistake. So I'm adding a card. By the way, there is many kind of cards. Please do read about it, okay? I don't know, I will, here we go. Text, context, background, text. So let's put, I don't know. Let's put an info. I'm just making it up. Honestly, I didn't play with it myself. Okay? We'll see, here we go. We're getting a background of that. Now, I go into here. And I can add card editor. And let me add the header. I'm gonna add a header. Let's see what they advanced here. It's a div. I, most likely you can change the header color, I assume. Let's try it. Honestly, I never tried. But you can go ahead and try, maybe it works, maybe not. If it doesn't work, that's fine too. Let's put it to be red. Just for fun. Okay? So here we go, it doesn't really have a red. I didn't put in the card, I didn't put any text. So let's go ahead, let's go ahead and add a text. Frankly, I never done it before. I never read about it. I'm just making it up, just using some common sense. I'm copying from whatever in the website of Kabbalah, trying to mimic their website. When you know it takes really few minutes. I put it here, Ctrl V. And let's put the text to be white. So it will, it will, let's put it in a gray kind of, so we can see a little bit. I'm saving it. And big go. This is really like, a little similar to theirs. Not the same. By the way, we can make exactly like theirs, if we want. Okay? And here I can write whatever I would like in the middle. So let's go in the middle, by the way. This component is beautiful. It's designed for that purpose. I can add another card, another editor card. And I can add a body. Okay? And in the body, by the way, as we did before, we can add an attribute, style. And we can add background color. I'm sorry. Background, background color. This time we won't put red, let's put even white. But you will play with it, okay? And do beautiful stuff. I'm sure you can even add an image inside, okay? Let's see what they have written here. Okay, they haven't written really anything. It's just all environment. This is really useless, of course. But we won't get, we just wanna know how you really add stuff. So, eh, sorry, cancel. I need to add a text inside. And inside the text, I will write whatever I want. Environment. Save. And big go. You see, I got really, something similar, I don't think it's less. I'm colorblind, so I chose colors really terribly, probably. But you can change the colors, you can play with whatever. The most important things, don't be afraid. If I double click here, I get the environment. I wanna change the color. Learn it. How do I change colors? Don't be afraid. Look at that. It says here, you know, it's, by the way, it's a link. Okay, it's a link. But if I wanna change the color, don't be afraid. Go here. Go style. Be that level. Get to this level. And go color. Again, I just put in colors that I can see, yellow. I do see yellow. So I put yellow. Okay? So let's see if this has changed it or not. No, it didn't. I don't know why, let's see. Here, by the way, I can do it much easier, yeah? I just say color, style. Maybe I should do it here. Let's see. Let me try that. Put in the P. But I, I'm counting on you to be better than me on that stuff. Let's see if that works. Yeah, it does. Okay? And it's gonna change it to yellow. I could have done it much easier, by the way. Okay? Let's go here. Of course, you could have done it easier. But I just wanted to show you, don't be afraid. This is after all HTML. Okay? Now I remove the yellow. I could have gone right here and just go to the colors here, change it to whatever color it is. And let's see if it works. Okay? It should work. Okay, you have all the tools, but don't be afraid. Change it yourself. Let me see, I think they have put a link. When I copied it from them, that's a link. But why this is a very bad link? By the way, they have done a terrible job. Why? Anybody? What do you think, guys? My God, can you hear me? Okay, I'm recording it, so you can see it's later if I lost you. Okay, guys? Why this is a bad link? Because you don't really wanna make a link this way. This is a bad way of doing link. What I would do, usually, I would just take this link. See, I'm copying their link. This is their link. And I'm removing the whole things from here. But this is not the right way to do link. Go back. And I go here, we have a very good component for link. I click on link. And I put the display is environment. Okay? It's a link. This is the connections. And this is very important. Always, always open a link in a new window. That's why I always choose target to be open in the window. And now I will do, okay? This is a much better link. Why is it much better link? By the way, if I wanna change that's to be any color, I can change it. If I want it to be, you know, a line to the left, will be very easy as well. By the way, if you go here. Okay? You can go right here and make style. Left. Now we will do it to be to the left. It doesn't look any difference here, but when you view it, you will see a difference. It should really put it to the left. But what the difference between this link to their link? If you look at their link, it's, when I click on it, it's going to the same page. You really shouldn't, never do that. What you really want to do is go to this one. And when you click on it. Seems like everything is freezing here. Am I right? Seems to be that everything's frozen. That's one of the problem of this zone. See, that's what go. When we click on our screen, it will open a new window. Please load this, it's a new window. I think I go back to the previous one. Okay? That's why this is like, here I have no way to go back. I, I really, you know, when you look at their website.
We are seeing your video instead.
Yeah, is it back?
We can't see.
It seems like the connection is very bad.
It's now back.
Okay, wonderful. In any case, I recorded it, so I will send you the recording. You can watch it. It's not stable, I can tell. Eh, what I was trying to say, if I go to Kabbalah, no, not this one. That I want, it's this one. Yeah, this one. This is already online, by the way. This is already on Academy City website. So what I was showing is how you can make it's like this. And I was emphasizing, when you click here, it will open a new window. Okay, I already opened one before. On their website, which I recommend not to do, when you click here, it's going to replace this page. You really shouldn't replace the page you are from. Okay, unless you really know what you're doing. Most of the time, you really shouldn't. Okay? So this is really just one, one thing. So here, I made similar thing to theirs. I can add another one if I want. Okay? You can just go here. Go to the style. I still have to do two rows. I have another column. By the way, I can just click here and copy. Go here and paste. Now I have two of them. That's pretty cool. Okay, I have two card. The second card, I can really modify, it will be easy. It will save me some time. Let's see what they had in the other one. The other one, they have P H E bulletins. Okay, I will go there. And I go to mine and see how quick I can do it. I will double click here. I get the text. Eh, it's hard for me to see. So what I'm gonna do, I'll go to the source. I just copy it here. That should do it. I will do source, go back. I will change the title. Okay? I wanna change now the link. Okay, I can double click here. I get the text. I can really, by the way, here I wouldn't do the way they did it. I will do it in our way. I will delete this link altogether.
Yeah.
I will delete that, I will delete everything from inside. So I have an empty one. I'm going to replace the inside here to make it looks like theirs. Okay, they have three links. I'm gonna copy them. Right to here. And we'll change them in a second. Okay? I could leave it this way, by the way. And do save. And you will see, it will work, will be just fine. Okay? The only things is that when you click here, it will replace the existing one. So I will show you how you can do it manually. Okay, without having to do it through building it up from scratch. Let me show you. Okay, I go to the source. And if you go here. When you have a link, you see, no, by the way, this one would go to a new one. In fact, this one, they have done it. Target blank, it will open a new window. So they have done the work already. So I don't have to worry about it. Let's do cancel. The only things, I would like it to be to the left. So we can go here and don't be afraid. Never be afraid. Go into here and you can see what they have done. They made like a little table, if you notice. You see that, they made a little table? They put padding of tail. The padding is really the space right here or around. Do I need the padding? Well, I'm not sure. As, please also study. When I put padding this way, it's all over. If I put, I can put only padding left. If I put left, it will put it only to the left. Let's try it. Okay? Do it this way and do save. Uh, no, not change. Probably the, the, the whole things is to the right, to the left. Here we go, I think I have a space here. Let's try that. And don't, you know, they made a table. I never will make a table. Why you don't wanna make a table? You might even wanna do something nicer. By the way, you can even change that from a table to something else. Okay? They had a width, they had a pad, background, cell spacing, tea table, and they might have forty. You know, I would have even changed it, honestly. You know? I will remove the whole things. And don't be afraid again. See, I'm deleting everything. And why I'm not afraid? Because I know what I'm doing. If I go here, I'm deleting up to the, up to the second link. I'm gonna delete up to the third link. Those are the really the links, the A is the link. And now it's clean. Is that right? I have three links. Okay? Now, by the way, I can go back to this. It will show me like three of them, very confusing. So I don't even know where they are ending. So I, I teach you a trick. Okay, you already have done something here. Okay? Eh, let me. Okay. Here is the A. This is one A. Let's go to the second A. And don't be afraid again. You already should know, you always like to put the, the P as a paragraph. What I would do, without being afraid, just go to here. And you know already, type of list. You can do unordered list. And finish it with unordered list. Unordered list. And then every list, you should start with L I. Now each one of them, okay? Will take L I and closed with an L I, but you have to put the slash, remember? So I'm gonna do all of them. And this will be just perfect. Don't be afraid. And if you made a mistake, big deal. Start all over. Over time, you'll be expert. Okay? Pay attention, this is something you can study in W3 school. They have excellent example. They have unordered list. Okay? How is the unordered list? U L and not with U L. Each one of them takes L I. Let's try it. Source. Here we go, I got three with a dot. I can do save. Here we go. I got it with a dot. I don't like it, I can change it. By the way. Cancel. You can always go here. If, for some reason, they're clicking. You always can go here. Will take you to the same place. If, if you have too much space here, you feel like you can always make, by the way, style. This is also a trick. Left. And you can put. Let's put 10 px. Close. Okay? Or what I did is I added margin. Don't forget the quotation mark. Let's see what it does. It move it to the right. Did you notice? I don't wanna move it to the right. In fact, I would like to move it to the left. So here is the trick. Let's put minus 10. Minus 10, it will move it even outside of the box. It moves even more. Let's see that. You see, it's moving more. If I wanted, this is... If I wanted, this is looks fine to me. I don't know if you want. Everybody got it?
Yeah.
Okay? See, this is, by the way, as I said, I'm a colorblind. You can put a nicer frame, change the color of the frame. Remember that? If I, if I double-click on it or just take it all the way, altogether, you can do that too. In fact, if I go into the card, let's put a blank white. Let's see what it does. Here we go. It makes it dead style. You can play whatever, I don't know. Play with it and see what you like. By the way, you can make the whole things from scratch. What do I mean by that? Let's try it. Let's say, I am becoming to be expert, okay? I have the third column, I have a card. I don't wanna put a card. I have two cards, is that right? I have two cards. And the third one, I wanna add just simple text. Let's start with having a text that, you know, like from scratch. How do we start from scratch? Like writing an HTML. Let's start with a div. And close it with a div. This is when you really becomes to be professional. Let's do the same things. Copy it inside. Do the same things, copy it inside. So I will have, this is will be for the header and that will be for the body. The header, okay? And then you can really play with it. Let's write the header Amos. Let's write here Amos. And the body, talking. I would just, by the way, I have two pieces. No floating, no nothing. Let's see how it looks like. You see, I just see, I wasn't talking, but I don't see a header, I don't see anything. I can start playing with it, don't I? I can go here and do for the head, style. Equal. Remember background color? I hope I don't, I spell it right. Back. Did I spell it right? Color. Let's put it right.
There's an R missing.
Am I missing something? Back.
You're missing R.
Yeah, you're right, I missing an R. I never can spell anything. Okay, here we go. Oh, now it's the whole things, you see that?
Yes.
I have a Amos and this is white. But I don't have any frame, by the way. Can I put a frame? Definitely you can put a frame. That's when you becomes to be really professional. By the way, you can even make a table if you want. It will put the structure for you. Let's save it for now. Let's see what we see. By the way, this is really not the way we want it to look like. Is that right? This is not really the way we would like it to look like. But how about we want to put a border around the whole things? Can we put a border? Let's say I don't know anything. Go to here. W, who is our best friend? Is that right? And what do I want? I want borders. Here we go, borders. Let's click on it. Let's see what it shows me. Oh, very nice. Let's see, here we go. There's so many kind of borders. Which kind do we like? Let's say I like, I don't know, let's say solid. You can play with it, double border, whatever you want. Let's go to try, so you can also see. Let's say I like, I don't know, I just will pick up one of them. What about this one? Here, this is a solid. I'll just make the solid. So I will take this one, the border, you see that? Copy it. Go back to our place. And please don't be afraid. That's the key point. I go here, double-click. By the way, you can make special effect, you can do everything. The tools make your life easier. So I'm going to go here to the outside div, write a style. Equal, quotation mark, put it around here. And by the way, I can, that's probably border color, I'm almost sure, okay? Here we go, now I have a border, you see that? Can I change the border color? Most likely, click. Is there any colors here? No, I don't see. Okay. I can, here we go, border color. You see, I just click here. See how easy? So that means border color. Let's change it still. Which color do we want? Blue. You can choose any color you want. This is the way you learn, by the way. And over time, you become to be excellent and you move on, do other things. Go here. Even if you don't remember, you always can come. And now, here we go. I got it's blue. It's too close, did you see? It's too close, is that right? So let's go back to here. How about we put here padding? This one I remember by heart, padding. I did it too many times. Let's put ten P X. Okay? Now we will move both of them. You see, put them on the side. How about we want also a line on the top? Or we want also a frame around each one of them? What do you think? We can do that too, can't we? Let's do, let's take now the style. And by the way, the border, it doesn't have, it could be also a border, bottom border. Here I put a color, hold a second. Let me just put this one. I took padding and copy it to here. And let's put it, padding ten. Let's copy this one also for the talking. Fair enough. So let's see what we got. It's not looking a little better. It's far from what we want, but definitely better. Let's save it. Oh, it's slightly better. It's not as nice as this one. It's, but it's getting close, isn't it? You agree?
Yes.
I don't know which color is this one. As I said, I'm a colorblind, so forgive me. If I wanna make it on the center, I want Amos to be on the center. Again, this is really building from scratch. You can do here, style, text, align, center. You can do right, left, whatever. Source, you see, it's Amos, it's in the middle. Now I can take that and other things. Pay attention. After you do certain things like that, you know, I don't really like the border here, but you can play with the border. You can go here, go around a little bit, there is so much to learn from them. You know, when you go here, there is so much border slides, you know? Go and look at them, you know, look at them and you learn. And over time, here, here we go, rounded border. You see, here I have rounded. Maybe I wanna make it rounded. Learn it, it's so easy. It's all what it does, border radius, radius. Over time, you accumulate knowledge, you see here it's padding. You learn and not everyone has to be excellent. Over time, you accumulate knowledge, it becomes to be for design. Eventually, it will, each one of you will take some responsibility and be expert on certain stuff. And as we go along, things will get better, okay? You will, you will be able to share. But this is an excellent, excellent learning website, okay? So that's one of the special I wanna show you. This is already look, very much bad, not bad to, as a website. Not bad at all. This one, I did with Django stuff. Here I changed the color. And as you saw, even this one, I can change to a different color if I want. If I like, I don't know, a lot info, warning or blue, I can change blue. I wanna check, whatever. You can play with it as you please. And this is really nice effect. You can put, we learn about the columns, you can put in columns, etc., etc. Let's see other things. By the way, I wrote some stuff. Let me show you another things that I did for Kabbalah. If I go to Kabbalah, I went to the directors. I just put one of them. So you can see how I did it. This is like the director of administration and human resources. It also has two columns. Okay, I made two columns. And here, if you go here and you can see it. I put a text on the top, one text on the top. So it will take the whole place. I put one column here, one column for the picture. If I want, I can put her name on there. Is that right? I can go, go here. I can put her name if I want in the bottom. I think her name is Grace. Grace, whatever. I don't remember her full name. Here we go. I wanna put more stuff. Let's go and see their website. If you look at their website, let's go to the directors. Here we go. By the way, I did the whole things here. Just this part I didn't do. This will be very easy. I can go and copy the whole things here. I clicked, copy, go to here. And now I can add to the first column another text. I'll add another text. I put the whole things here. Control V and save. And here we go. Now, what happened? It lies ah. I think I've had that one longer. No problem. What we can do now, we just take it out. I don't want it to really in the color effect. That's the picture. I really don't want it here. I want it altogether out. That will do it. Now I have it better. It still doesn't look nice to me. I would like to move it to the right. We already know the trick, is that right? You can just go here. Go to the source.
Padding.
Go into the style, right? And I can move it. By the way, you really do have, you can go here, mark the whole things. And you have it in ten, if I don't, if I remember. Do I have it there? No, I don't see it. But it doesn't really matter. You can just go here and just put here margin or padding left, whatever you like. Both of them will do, padding. And in fact, here I will do padding for two reasons. Let's put ten P X. And then I will put a ten P X. And then I put another ten P X. And then I will put thirty P X. Eventually, I will explain what that one. You see, there's four. This is go on the top. This is go to the right. This is to the bottom, this is to the left. Let's see if that works the way I want it. Seems like, let's see. Nope, it didn't like me for some reason. Did I do it? Let's see. Yeah. No, it throwed me away for some reason. Ah, I know why. Let me do the following. You have a list and you didn't put the list inside the div, if you notice. So one things you can do is just, there's two things that you can do. You can control, copy and do B R, it's a new line. And put the div in the very end. Now it will include everything. It will include everything. Hopefully now, let's do source. That still looks the same, which is fine. But I would like to make margin and do left. I put here twenty P X and semi-colon. Let's see if that works. Yeah, I think that works. You see, it did move it to the left. Not enough. If I want it to be right on there or whatever, I can double-click. And now I will even change it slightly better. I will, I will take the left away. And let's, let's see what the effect now. It will put twenty everywhere. Another effect is I can put just four times, this is the same will be. By the way, this is the same as just putting one time. But this time, I'm gonna put here two hundred. So we know what the last one does. So go to the source. Hey, you see, the last one is really the left one. Did you see that? So that means, maybe how about I'll make this one forty? See now, if that's, that's make fifty. Let's see how that looks like. Do we get it right under her picture? Let's see. That looks much better. You agree? This is look too long on the right, isn't it? What do you think, guys?
That's good.
How would you fix it, anybody? How do you fix it? Very simple. Go again, double-click. And we know that this is really has to do with this part, isn't it? Is that right? Has to do really with the div. How about I go to the div and I will do margin. But which one is the right? Who is the right? This is the top, this is the right. How about if I put here three hundred? Let's see what happen. Source. Now you see, it make it smaller. You got it? Let's play with it a little bit, so we get the sense of it. Is this the way we want it? Looks like better, isn't it? Everybody got it?
Yes.
You see? You can play with it as you wish. You just have to know a little bit HTML and CSS. And then you can do any things you want, any things you want, okay? You can do, you know, what could be really nice? If they had a webpage to each one of their directors. And then we can have that, this one has a link. When you click on it, it will take you to her website. If she had a website. If you remember in Academy City, we're gonna Academy City. When you go to the advisors, you go to the advisors, okay? You're getting really the webpage of everyone. I go to R2, it goes to R2. I go to here, it goes to here. But I did something in addition. I did a language, when you go to a regular course, let's go to this course. I made it for myself, but if I go here, this is when you do smart stuff. What is that which a course of Tao Kling, okay? I go to Tao Klings. If you notice, in Tao Klings, when I go to the, let's say, let's say this guy, okay? He gave the first lecture. Okay, he gave the first lecture. If a smart way is, when I really want to read about this guy, I click on his name, see what happened. He opened his web exactly in the same place, it's his webpage. That's smart stuff. We will do that as we go along, okay? For now, we just want to really learn the basic stuff. Questions, guys? Michael, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Very good, I know that there. But you can see me too, can you?
Yeah.
Can you see the screen? Okay, I will upload it. It will be, so you can go over. Ça sera donc que vous pouvez aller là-bas plus tard. Voici des bons exemples. J'ai mis quelques exemples pour vous. S'il vous plaît, ce que je voudrais que vous essayiez pour un dimanche. Nous nous reverrons. Je voudrais se rencontrer le samedi. Nous avons une réunion. Le mardi. Et puis le dimanche, vous serez prêt, espérons-le. Une chose que je voulais que vous fassiez. Regardez. Si vous allez à Kampala. Et laissez-moi, laissez-moi me loger. Je veux montrer... Je me logerai un instant. Quand vous allez à Kampala, c'est leur projet. Par ailleurs, je l'ai pris de leur site. Celui-là. C'est un site. Si vous regardez la droite, je l'ai fait très similaire à la façon dont je vous ai montré maintenant. Très similaire à la chose. J'ai mis leur photo. Très facile. Nous avons une photo. Nous pouvons ajouter des photos. Vous savez déjà comment faire des photos. Ok? En fait, je l'ai téléchargé de leur site. Et quelle est la partie belle? La partie belle est... Maintenant, je vais me loger. Et je m'ajoute des tables en passant. Si vous voyez à la fin, nous avons les towns d'Uganda. J'ai ajouté un pour les directeurs. Un pour les projets. Celui-là, il est automatiquement filtré, donc vous ne le touchez pas. Nous avons services. Nous avons personnel. Nous avons les agents de la ville. Celui-là, je n'ai pas utilisé. Nous avons quatre towns. Celui-là, vous l'avez déjà utilisé. C'est la façon dont vous mettez tous les towns. Ok? C'est celui-là. En passant, vous pourrez ajouter d'autres informations. Pour le moment, nous nous concentrons sur Apache et Altebe et Lira. C'est peut-être gingembre, mais je pense que Altebe, Lira et Apache sont les... Apache est le principal que nous voudrions nous concentrer. Donc pour cette table, nous sommes finis. Je retourne à les towns. Nous avons les directeurs. Maintenant, si vous regardez les directeurs, je n'ai juste ajouté Kampala. Voyons la page web d'Apache. Euh, ouais, Apache. Laissez-moi... Je vais encore. Ok, je suis ici. Ok? Vous essayez de voir qui est leur... Qui est leur directeur? Ok? Donc, la plupart des fois, tous ceux-là sont des directeurs. Une chose que nous pouvons faire, nous pouvons faire très similaire à la page web de Kampala. Vous savez, je ne sais pas pourquoi ils l'ont fait de cette façon. Qui a conçu leur chose. Et honnêtement, ça ne devrait pas être ici. Ça n'a rien à voir avec les directeurs. Ok? Donc, si je voulais faire... Si je voulais faire... Ici, nous avons Mangasa. Ok, Monsieur Mangasa. Donc, comment ajouter Mangasa comme directeur? Donc, je vais ici. Je copie son nom. Et je vais aux towns. Laissez-moi voir. Laissez-moi fermer ici. Ok. Voilà. Je vais ajouter un autre directeur. Ajouter un directeur, vous savez déjà comment le faire. Le directeur numéro un. La ville. Apache. Voilà. Son premier nom. Mangasa. Et son dernier nom. Par ailleurs, je vais garder ici les lettres majuscules. S'assurer que vous obtenez... Celui-là n'est pas capital. Donc, assurez-vous que c'est capital, ça va ressembler bien. Quel est son position? Il est un town clerk. Ok? Actif, oui. Maintenant, voici la partie belle. Qu'est-ce qui se passe? Après avoirgardé, quand je vais à la page web. Laissez-moi voir encore. Laissez-moi revenir à Academy, à les towns d'Uganda. Je suis à Apache. Et quand je suis aux directeurs, il devrait apparaître ici. Euh, town clerk. Euh, je me suis... Oui. Les directeurs, les town clerks. Peut-être que nous devrions... Il... Oui. Je pense que c'est la façon dont il est conçu. Si vous regardez le nom que... Quel est son nom? À Kampala, c'est la façon dont ils l'ont fait. Ok, ajoutons un autre. Ok, ajoutons un autre. Ok. Ici, nous avons Patrick. Il est un mail. Il est le mail. Ok? Donc peut-être que le mail va lui donner le numéro un. Donc, je peux aller ici. Eh, où est-ce que je... Fermer. Là-haut, non. J'ai trop d'ouverts. Ok. Laissez-moi aller... Je veux aller à l'admin. Voilà. Laissez-moi ajouter un autre. Apache. Et mettons un mail. Et mettons-il comme numéro un. Et je vais changer celui-là pour... Donc, c'est... Il est... Quel est son nom? Patrick. Aller ici. Et je vais le mettre ici. Dernier nom. Et actif. Et laissez-le comme numéro un. Revenons. Et changer pour Mangasa devenir numéro deux. Pour qu'il ne y ait aucun conflit. Donc Mangasa va devenir numéro deux. Juste parce que l'autre est le mail. Ou quoi que Mangasa nous dirait. Ok? Donc, nous avons Apache, ok? Je vais... En fait, la partie belle est maintenant quand vous allez ici. Quand vous allez ici et vous refaisiez, il est automatiquement dans Apache que la liste est mise à jour. Et ici est la chose la plus importante. Je clique sur mail. Ça semble rien ne se beurber. Mais ça fait vraiment. Comme nous l'avons fait avec les services. Si vous vous souvenez avec les services. Je peux cliquer ici. Et je peux commencer à écrire. Je peux ajouter ici et mettre un style. Save. En dessous, je peux ajouter un texte. Et je peux faire... Par ailleurs, je peux faire tout ce que je veux. Par ailleurs, je n'ai pas... Je peux faire une erreur. Ok? Je peux faire deux lignes ou même trois ou autant que je veux. J'ai deux lignes, deux colonnes en dessous. Mettons ici. Ici, je peux mettre un texte. Et je peux mettre une photo. Je peux vraiment mettre une photo ici. Voyons la municipalité. Ici est le mail. Non? Downloader sa photo. Save as. Save image as. Où est la photo? Save image as. Et je vais juste le mettre ici. As. Je peux vraiment ici. Je vais faire... Normalement, c'est une bonne idée de faire un directeur pour que vous ne vraiment... Je vais l'appeler directeurs. Et sauvez-le. Et je vais sauver celui-là. Et voyons quel est. Maintenant, minimise-le. Minimize. Je voudrais voir la taille de la photo. Les towns d'Uganda. Non, je ne le vois pas ici. Je ne sais pas pourquoi je l'ai mis. Un second. Je vais le trouver encore. Et je vais essayer de sauvegarde image as. Il me dira pourquoi je l'ai mis. Il l'a mis là-haut. Uganda, Apache. Oui, ok. Donc, c'est un petit, donc ce n'est pas trop mauvais. Je peux l'ajouter. Ça va être ok. Cancel. Revenons à ma page web. Et maintenant, je veux mettre sa photo ici. Donc, je vais mettre image. Et je vais l'ajouter à sa photo. Choisissez le fichier. Ça me semble bien pour moi. Je pense que j'ai eu ce problème. Essayons-le encore une fois. Et il y a une photo ici. Vous pouvez mettre une photo ici, une figure. Maintenant, je veux un texte. Texte. Photo. Choisissez le fichier. Je ne sais pas ce qui se passe. Je ne sais pas pourquoi. Il ne m'a pas aimé. J'ai essayé pour un autre ordinateur. Voyons si il est... Il va le prendre ici. Download. Je vais aller ici. Oui, ici. Directeurs. Ok, bien. C'est une bonne photo. Laissez-moi voir si je peux le faire. Ok, il a fait. Et uploader, ok? Et voilà. Mais ça semble un peu gros. Donc, ce que nous pouvons faire, c'est double-cliquer. Et juste courir vers le haut. Aller dans l'avancement. Et juste le rendre comme ça. Faisons 150. Normalement, c'est une bonne taille. Et juste OK. Il va le raccourcir un peu. Et sauvez-le. Ok. Nous pouvons... En fait, sa photo est ici. Nous pouvons faire sur la droite. Mettre un texte à propos de lui. Ok? Et par ailleurs, je suis juste suggérant. Vous n'avez pas vraiment... Vous pouvez faire tout ce que vous trouvez utile. Ok? Vous pouvez mettre... Je copie ici. Mais vous pouvez vraiment être très créatif. Même mieux que moi. Ok? As long que vous le faites vraiment. Ctrl V. Et allez sauver. Maintenant, ça ne semble pas très bien. Ok? Une chose que nous pouvons faire, vous pouvez faire... Tout d'abord, c'est un conteneur qui est bon. Nous pouvons aller dans cette colonne. Et faire celui-là pour être, disons, ici, nous le ferons comme deux. Voyons comment ça marche. Ok? Et... Ok, donc sa photo est ici. Et une autre chose que nous pouvons faire est faire un peu de espace ici. Donc, il ne sera pas trop proche de ici. Ok? Ça commence à ressembler un peu mieux. Celui-là, je peux aller ici et raccourcir aussi. Pas être automatiquement comme le défaut. Mettons cinq. Voyons comment cinq ressemble. Et trop petit. Je peux le rendre un peu plus grand. Cancel. C'est ici. Je vais le rendre comme six. Voyons comment six ressemble. Même plus petit, même plus grand. Faisons ça. Faisons ça comme sept. Un peu mieux. Ok, jouez avec ça légèrement. Et ici, je peux aller ici. Et je peux même faire ça. Ça ressemble... Ça ressemble généralement mieux quand vous le faites de cette façon. Pour une raison. Ça ressemble mieux. Vous pouvez juger le couleur si vous le voulez. Jouez avec ça. Ok? Vous pouvez jouer avec ça comme vous le voulez. Par ailleurs, je suis sûr que vous pouvez faire les images rondes. Quoi que vous ayez. Laissez-moi juste faire celui-là comme bleu. Pour que vous puissiez voir, vous pouvez jouer avec l'échange. Tout est en vos mains, vraiment. Par ailleurs, peut-être que vous ne voulez pas faire celui-là comme ça. Donc, pour une raison, il a mis celui-là comme ça, ce que je n'aime pas. Donc... Il a mis style. Il a aussi pris le console. Je vais prendre cette partie du fil jusqu'ici. Out. Ou le retirer. Et celui-là, nous le déplacons. Et le mettre à l'extérieur. Donc... Voici comment ça ressemble. N'oubliez pas de mettre le BR. C'est une nouvelle ligne. Voyons comment ça va ressembler. Ça va ressembler mieux. Peut-être que nous avons trop d'ici. Voyons. Voyons comment ça ressemble. Peut-être que nous devons supprimer un espace. Oui, nous devons... Je pense que nous devrions supprimer un espace. Voilà. Oui. Nous n'avons pas besoin de ça. Ctrl V. Nous n'avons pas besoin de celui-là. Retirer celui-là. Et ça va ressembler mieux. Ok? Vous pouvez jouer avec ça, vraiment. Jouez avec ça comme vous le voulez. Ça va être... Ça est beaucoup plus professionnel. Vous pouvez mettre son nom. Vous pouvez le déplacer à gauche, à droite, quoi que vous ayez. Ok? Vous avez tous les outils que je viens de suggérer. Vous pouvez le mettre à gauche ensemble. Vous savez, très facile, vous pouvez changer celui-là You know, very easily you can change this one to be instead of a container. You can just change this one to a, to a content. But they, remember, the spacing will be different. So I put him to the left. Do you really want it to be that way? Not really. You might want to mark it here, put him in the center. Let's see how it looks like now. He is in the center. And it's all in your hand. You can really play with it as you wish. And it looks nicer. Make it's bigger, you wanna make it's rounded, doesn't really matter. I think it meant the picture bigger. You can go here, by the way. Double click. And you know, we change in the advance. Instead of one fifty, you can make it two fifty, let's say. It will be much bigger picture. It will show him as a much bigger picture. Don't forget, you want it to look really nice, you can put it in his name now. You know, instead of putting that I'm here, or putting it's down, okay? You might even, since it's a bigger picture, give it's more space. So you go here to the column. And instead of two, how about you give it three now? It will look a little better. It's all designed. And this one, you can make, instead of seven, take it down again to, let's say, six now. Or five even, let's see how five looks like. Yeah. Okay? You can even take that one down also. If you want it to look really nice. It's all your decision. Here we go. So easy to implement. I think it looks much more professional, honestly. All this rounding and all of that stuff, it just flashy for, if you're doing marketing. But if you really wanna do something professional, this is the right way. This is, looks much more professional. The picture is not very good. His face is not very clear. I probably will recommend to take a better picture with a good flesh, so his face will look nicer. It looks nice, but the lighting is not really good. If it was a better lighting, he will come much better. Okay? This is really easy, how you can put any things you want. Links, everything. Again, please do go over. Try to study the component you can add. By the way, look at them, there's many of them, style, role, card. There's alert, budget, eh, blackboard. Play with it, don't worry. You cannot destroy it. If you don't like it, remove it. Jumbo button, it's like a big button, link button, this group, play with it, okay? I played with, I use most, some of them. Honestly, I never really use file and folder, I have no idea how it works. Never played with Google Map. How about you learn it? Learn about Google Maps, see if you can figure it out, okay? And we take it from there. We talk tomorrow. I noticed that the communication is not good. I recorded it, and I will upload it for you. Have a good one, guys.